I note that all board members on attendance this evening.
First item is 3.1, approval of the agenda. Motion to approve tonight's agenda. Thank you, Jim. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. Is that a roll call?
All in favor?
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Second, action items coming out of closed session. We have a resolution authorizing dismissal. Read the resolution for you now. The superintendent recommends the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education has received reports from the administration regarding the performance/conduct of Jason Norris, and whereas such reports detail deficient performance and incidents of misconduct and insubordination that evidence Norris's failure to remedy deficiencies that had previously been brought to his attention, and whereas such unremedied deficiencies constitute grounds for dismissal. Now therefore be resolved that the Board has determined that there is just cause to dismiss Jason Norris as an employee of this district, and hereby authorizes such dismissal effective as of June 23rd, 2014. A roll call? There are just resolutions. Do we need to vote on this?
Motion.
No, sorry. Need a motion? So moved. Thank you, Jim. And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
I think all.
Roll call? Okay.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes. And now we're into communications. We have some good news tonight. First is the recognition of the GHS girls soccer team. Mr. Lee?
What started out as a very rough year at Glenwood ended on a very, very high note in two consecutive weeks. So, I'm very proud of what our soccer team and Coach Leib and his staff have accomplished. Three straight years, trips to the state championships, and a trophy each time, first, second, third place. It's awesome. I'd like Coach to come up and say a few words and recognize anybody he ever did.
Just an outstanding year by our kids and efforts they put in. Not expected whatsoever really after having some success the last couple of years. So, each year's a different year, and new group of kids, very humbling to be part of it. You know, and just a lot of fun for us as a coaching staff to watch these kids, a new group of kids, experience it out like this. It may never happen again, so we all take it for granted. Very appreciative of the support they have from their parents and from teachers and everybody here in the school district. We hope to continue. One special thing is to see the softball team do well, because I've had a lot of those girls in class eighth hour, was half softball, half soccer. So, we're glad that they could have the success they did too. I've got, you know, summertime's very difficult, obviously. We've got a couple people here to introduce. First, one of our senior players was Allison Richards. Allison, come on over here. And then one of my assistants could be here tonight, Zach Ody, who's first year with us and helped us a lot, so. So, apologize that we couldn't have more people here tonight. Just not that they don't appreciate it, but we'll make sure that they get their certificates and we're speaking for them. We definitely appreciate your recognition of our team. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Would like to add, thank you very much, Coach, to you and your staff. It's a program. It doesn't happen overnight. You keep inserting kids and they're learning a lot of valuable life lessons, and we're lucky to have the community and the families and the dedication of the educational system and the coaching staff. So, thank you for your efforts.
One thing needs to be recognized about both these groups, how they represent the school when they go places. And I've gotten letters now from the IHSA after each one of these state series, complimenting them on just that, how the class they show, the way they act, and the attitude. They're just a great group of girls on both sides. Now, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bondal Egger, brought home our first girls' state softball championship. Mr. Egger?
That's what I tell anybody that gives me a stage or anything. We might be here a while, so. No, it was a great group of kids, obviously. Anytime you're able to win a state championship, it's very impressive. The thing that I was very impressed by with the kids is just how they bought in to the things that the staff and I were trying to present to them, genuinely caring about each other, putting things into perspective as far as... In softball, there's a lot of failure, so if you can cut things down to the minimal thoughts and the process that you're in instead of the results, usually good things are going to happen. So, they really bought into those things, and I couldn't be happier, obviously. It was a long time coming, so. And we'd like to thank you guys for having us here tonight. We don't have a lot of people here, and it was really hard to win with two kids. Picture and catcher.
That's all you needed.
But, you know, just the whole process was a lot of fun. The way that we were able to do it was even more fun, beating the number one team in the state. I guess, that's what they told me. So, that's always fun. Okay. Our representatives are Amanda Ballster... and Matty Torre. One of our assistant coaches, he's a volunteer, is Jana Cooper. So, we genuinely would like to, you know, thank you guys for having us here tonight. I know a lot of kids couldn't come, but like Jay said, it's summertime. And once we turn them loose on that Saturday, we're lucky to get them there on that Sunday at school, so. Just thank you very much.
Thanks for your dedication, too. That's awesome. Congratulations.
And you don't have to stand.
Yeah, you guys don't have to. Go out and enjoy the weather.
That's not fair.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming.
All right, we move to 5.3, opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any agenda topic. Would anyone like to address the board regarding any agenda topic this evening? No, we'll move to item 6, budget hearing. Patrick?
So, this is the public comment portion of our budget hearing. There's no action here at this point. These numbers haven't changed since the May presentation, so these are the same numbers that you've seen, so no other changes have been made at this point. Unless there's questions from the board or the public. Hopefully after this, we'll be seeking your approval for this in the next item.
I see your columns with the changes and the notes and the explanation of the updates, title updates, and the rough snow removal year and that, so thank you for that additional explanation.
This is a newer format, first time we used it since I've been here, so I hope that's helpful.
Can you roll up to the beginning again, Patrick?
That's his driving right now. I appreciate that.
I can switch it though, if you want to drive.
Oh, okay. This, okay. This doesn't, Patrick, this, that version does not tie to the version that's used for the fiscal '15 draft budget.
Betsy, will you pull up the one that says June?
June, yeah.
Right.
Oh, that's the May, actually.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was the May version.
Both were posted in there.
And then here's, just so you can see what was posted in May. Here's the June, with some title changes and things like that.
Right, okay.
The bottom dollars for each of the funds haven't, nothing changed, so I would really pull out there differently. Sorry. Thank you, Betsy. We put both there just so you can flip back and forth if you needed to.
I've gone through it in detail, and it appears that we're tracking for a positive year, so well, we're done now, so.
Pretty close.
All right, so tremendous improvement from years past, so hopefully we can keep on the better path here. Thank you, Patrick. Any additional questions on...
And these numbers do include the sale of the farm?
Yes, they do.
Correct. That wasn't in the original?
That was not in the original. You are correct. These do reflect that.
The whole amount?
Yes, between the ed fund and the working cash fund were the two lines where it was split. Those two show in there in the revenue side, yes.
Okay, so that gets us into the positive?
Along with some reductions in expenses and some things, yes.
Excuse me, but I can't remember, what was the split on the land proceeds? It was 575?
Approximately 575 into the working cash and the balance going into the ed fund, which goes back to the original purchase of the purchase price of that land.
225.
To replenish the ed fund, about to under 300?
Right. And that was in the board meeting after the sale of that land, where we decided where to put that?
Right, right.
These do reflect those numbers.
All right, so that's the budget amendment, so that's not actionable. Any other questions?
That's the public comment section. What happened in six?
If you look there, it's on page three of this. If you scroll to work, where it says working cash, you can see where it's next one, I think. Right there, you can see where local sources, 575 revised, and it's farm sale proceeds
So, where's this put us then? I think at the beginning of this fiscal period, we were looking at like 247 or something.
We're still in that, still projecting in that 247 range. We're able to not only reduce some of the expenses, but some of the revenues were also a little bit of reduction as well, so our gap stayed about the same. So, we're still...
Actually, better than where we had projected, so.
Is that right? Because if you net this, 165, actually, the...
Between the operating fund.
Just in the operating.
Yeah, I know, I'm looking at it. It's excess revenue under parentheses, so that 165 is, revenues are under expenditure.
In the ed fund, correct.
So, that's negative 165, 157, that's negative 319. Well, I'd say the land sale helped us a lot. I'd say if not for the land sale, I think we didn't make it.
Absolutely.
Isn't that correct?
Absolutely. The land sale was unknown and unaccounted for revenue at the beginning when we first did the budget in September. And then that's been a realized revenue that, of course, we didn't know about back then. Absolutely.
Negative 320. So, if we didn't have the land sale, if we didn't have the land sale to bail us out, I think we would have been in the red.
Very possible.
165, 157, that's negative 8. Negative 327 plus 575, the next land sale. I'd say... Anybody, Rick, do you see that number differently than I?
Well, we need to add them up, so let's look at the difference in funds in the... Is this the June?
Right up. So, let's just go negative 165, easy. 157.
Well, hang on, let's get to, I can't see the top fund. So, we need the funds 10, 20, 40, and 70. So, the difference in revenue and expenses for the ed fund is...
That's a deficit.
Right.
The label's wrong on that line item. It's excess revenues under, that should be where the parentheses is. Under parentheses, over. So, that's a negative 165.
Which is revenue of 32, 883, less expenses of 33, 048, for a difference of a negative 164, 628. So, it's 164, 628, plus the next fund will be O and M, which is 20.
And that is a positive 157, 185. Correct.
All right, and then the next would be our fund...
Transportation.
40, transportation, which I believe was a negative number.
319.
319, and then the fund 70, which would be our working cash.
Which is 575. Those are the land proceeds.
And a little bit of levy from the year previous.
Which is 575. So, if not for the land sale, Rick, I would say we were in the red. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, how much are we in the red if it wasn't for the land sale? I'm not good at numbers in my head anymore.
Then we're all in trouble, so.
But we did get it. I mean, this is what we're, you know, we are here.
Okay, well, maybe you can't, you can't count on the land sale next year.
Absolutely.
It's a one-time event that really helped us out last year.
Correct.
And put that up.
Correct.
Put, I said, in a good, a much better position than the past. We went from millions of dollars in deficit spending to some painful cuts.
Keep in mind, too, to that point, we also then changed our levy for the year, and while the levy is, in theory, for the entire fiscal year ahead, much of that does come in still in the May and June time period, and since we're cash basis, it's realized then. So, we did make some modifications to what we would have otherwise asked for in the levy, so to say we're completely off just by the land sale may not be completely accurate.
That's right.
We would have gotten some levy dollars more, obviously we'd have made, well, we would have balanced that possibly with another fund, so it's, there's a lot of moving parts there to say exactly that we're off fully just the land.
Right, because we decreased the levy in the education fund for...
We decreased it in the working cash fund, because we received money from the land sale.
Okay.
So, we were able to put that money into some of the other areas, so...
Yeah, but it's probably not that significant.
Our levy would have looked a little different, I guess, is my point, and so it's a little hard to say what if, what would have been the exact dollar amount, because that would have been a whole different picture.
Maybe 100,000?
I don't know what the, I mean, we don't know what the...
Okay, we'll look at it.
But that's what we'll talk about for next year, too.
Sure, absolutely.
I'll look at it.
So, we're, we're, we were, oh, a week away from the end of this, of this year, so any other questions on the budget? So, with that, we'll move to approving the fiscal year 2014 amended budget. We'll need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Susan. Oh, there it is, okay. Oh. I don't have this printed out.
Yes, I do.
It said board done. Yeah. I have it right here. Okay, we have a resolution regarding the amended budget. Whereas the Board of Education of Ball Chatham Community Unit School District Number 5, County of Sagmen, State of Illinois has received and reviewed an amended budget for fiscal year 2014, and the Secretary of the Board has made such amended budget conveniently available for public inspection for at least 30 days prior to final action thereon, and whereas a public hearing was held in respect to such amended budget on June 23rd, 2014, notice of said hearing having been given at least 30 days prior thereto as required by law and all other legal requirements having been complied with, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education that the amended budget for FY 2014 is hereby adopted for said fiscal year, adopted June 23rd, 2014. Need a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Susan. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. Betsy? Call the roll?
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes. Moving on to our consent agenda items. Do you want to pull one of these?
There's no consent.
Okay, does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda list? Item 7 dot 1 through 719.
Can I just ask a question for clarification to try to save me from pulling it? Can you remind me how separated the foundation is from us?
How separated? We appoint members, we can pull that item if you want.
No, I was...
Oh, okay. We appoint a member, the Board appoints members, but they're a separate entity that is fundraising for the district.
Okay.
So, you have an institutional membership, that you appoint someone to that.
I was just curious.
The idea is so that then they're following the mission of the Board, because they're an arm of you, you know, through that institutional membership.
Okay. I was just asking, because most...
But they have a separate audit.
Most separate foundations I'm associated with, the main organization doesn't have an effect on the Board.
Wait, are we, we're not, they're not an arm of the Board?
No, you just appoint a member to the Board.
Okay. I thought you were saying Ball Chatham Educational Foundation is an arm of the Board.
No, no.
Okay, I got it.
Yes, they're, you just appoint members, and the idea is that then their mission is in line with your mission, I believe.
Well, we're reappointing three today.
Right, right, there are several institutional memberships.
Three of their Board.
Yes.
Got it, okay. Just curious, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay, I'm glad you asked.
Okay, and they're a charitable organization, right?
501(c)(3), yep.
I have one, Carrie, on the next one, 717. I know that we need to, it's under consent to nominate, but we don't have any nomination under that.
I apologize. If you will pull that, then we can fix that. I apologize.
Next time?
Yep. No, if you'll pull that right now, I'll add a name in there in your motion.
Then I'll pull 717.
Okay, thank you. Because we have someone who might want to do that.
Okay. So, with that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, 71 through 719 less 717.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for catching that, Charlie.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. And thank you, Brandon. Betsy, you call the roll?
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes. Now, item 717, reappointment of institutional members for the Ball Chatham Educational Foundation.
You know what they meant to pull?
We wanted 718. I said 717.
717, this has been changed since we printed it.
Did you change it?
717 is, online is nomination of treasure.
I printed mine, just while we're going.
Yeah, there was something that must have gone.
Okay.
I think we had a duplicate in there on our agenda originally.
Okay, so 717 is...
Yeah, nomination of treasure.
The nomination of treasure for the Ball Chatham Educational Foundation.
Sorry, Rick.
I'll put this online.
So, it's 718.
All right, so what we have before us...
Online, it says 717. I have 718, because I don't want to be incorrect, no? Well, that's weird, because up here it says 717, on my screen it says 7. It's very bizarre. Does that make sense, Chad?
Mine's 718.
That's very bizarre.
That's why I pulled 717.
I don't know. Because on my screen it's...
That's the one I want to bring the highlighter, you know, right?
Whatever that...
717, 718. Yeah, online.
There is a ghost agenda item. I don't know. That is very bizarre, but anyway, that's the one that you pulled.
Yes.
And so, I would like to add a name to that. Nathan Fretz will be added, will be hired tonight, and he's with us tonight, so.
So, the recommended action...
And we'll add that on that agenda item.
Well, can I, okay, nevermind, because he doesn't have to be an employee of the district room when we...
Well, he will be, so we can actually delay this vote until after.
I don't care. It's, it is an employee of the district usually.
And he's not an employee of the district yet.
Okay, so we'll bring this back.
Okay.
Okay.
It actually doesn't have to be, I mean, correct myself, it doesn't have to be, because it could be one of their members, but he's not part of their membership yet, so that's fine, we can wait until we hire him. Oh, we can wait. They can wait, that's fine. Okay. Because they could have someone on their Board serve as the treasurer if they wanted to.
Moving on to personnel consent items, item 81 through 8 dot 36. Does anyone have any that need to be pulled, what they would like pulled? 81 through 836. Do you want to make a comment on personnel? I see where that would happen, Carrie. We got 814 on here, under personnel, is, is, oh, I'm sorry, that's not right, never mind.
I don't know what happened.
I thought, instead of council payable, I thought there was something on council payable, which should be in the... Never mind.
Okay, I would like to pull 8.20, employment of full-time chief school business official, and I would like to introduce you, Nate, so would you like to do that, Rick? And give him?
Yeah, hold on just one second.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead and take action on those.
Okay, so...
You do that.
We're going to get this, aren't we?
So, personnel consent items, item 81 through 836, less 820, which has been pulled, so we need a motion to approve our personnel consent items.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Brandon.
Second.
Thank you, Lisa. Betsy, would you call the roll?
Sure. Nusis?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes. So, 8 dot 20, after a fairly exhaustive search in interviewing for the CSBO position, Nate Fretz has risen to the top of the candidates, which we had some very good candidates with some excellent qualifications, and just given the position and Nate's experience, we feel that it's going to be very good for our district moving forward, and we welcome Nate. Susan?
Yes. Would you please stand up so the board members can see you? Okay, thank you. I just, I agree that, I agree with Rick and Teresa and Carrie did a lot of background work, and then we were involved in your interview and welcomed you to the district.
I appreciate it very much. It's a pleasure to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you, Nate. And Nate starts on July 1st, so you've got one more week of summer left, and we'll see you here. So, with that, we need a motion to approve the employment of a full-time chief school business official, Nate Fretz.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Susan. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Betsy, would you call the roll?
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
The nomination.
Which is the nomination of a treasurer for the Ball-Chatham Educational Fund. As a recommendation to the foundation, of the foundation, to appoint Nate Fretz, newly employed District CSBO, as treasurer of the Ball-Chatham Education Foundation for the remaining of the two-year term, remaining year of the two-year term of treasurer. So I need a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Susan, second?
Second.
Betsy, would you call the roll?
Sure. Maddox.
Yes.
Nusis.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Moving to 9 dot 1, Old Business, a construction update of Phase One and Two. Welcome back, Dave.
Thank you. Tonight I've got our best Mike and Cory once again to present on the current progress. I've been out for a couple of weeks, and I think they can help me catch up a little bit. I did make the rounds today, but I think they got one for me.
I'll go ahead and give an update on Phase One first. Ball school is complete, and Joe, how's our grass growing?
It's growing.
It's growing? Good. We have a little bit of, we got to put on the sealant for the brick, but other than that, the building is occupied and is complete. As far as Glenwood Elementary, we got the corn play surface for the playground done, and we are pretty much done there, I don't know if there's any items outstanding. Not that she's aware of, but... And then GIS is a never-ending project. We have had some trouble getting the metal panels around the building going, everything from weather to the wrong material sent out, to the contractor can't find it in his storage yard. All in all, I've gotten word that it's here, and they're starting tomorrow, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, that'll all be done. The sidewalk around the circular area has been taken out, and the stoops have been put back, so we're going to hopefully get some grass growing here this fall, I don't want to do it during the summer, or else we're not going to get any grass. So all in all, that's Phase One work, I think we're wrapping up pretty well on everything. Phase One, no, Phase Two.
Before you move on to Phase Two, we heard from some students in the area, is there a possibility of keeping Glenwood, you mentioned Glenwood Elementary's playground, keeping it open or a gate or the ability for children to play?
My suggestion to you was that we add a man gate.
Okay.
The issue with GES in particular is the way it's designed, if someone were to pull a car in there, they could pull up on the corn play, we'll be back in repair mode.
Right.
And we have had some issues there with children taking knives and things and cutting into the floor. We've had that problem.
At GES?
At GES. But with your permission, we could certainly invest in a man gate, free foot gate, allow children and parents to access the playground.
We just watch if there's destruction, keep it locked or something, then, during a specific time you're seeing destruction to the car play, or?
Carrie, whether you put a gate there or not, they can hop.
Right, right.
It's just ease of access for the students and the parents to use it. So can we get that done?
I would rather get the man gate than worry about people trying to climb the fence, because they're climbing it now, so I'd rather it's a man gate, but just make it so much easier.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
Are they climbing it now?
Yeah, they're climbing it.
Yeah, that sounds a lot safer.
It just keeps the cars off the corn play, that's the important thing.
Okay.
So if you're ready, we're ready to...
Yeah, let's do that.
Is that something we can do in-house, or is that...
Absolutely.
Good. Thank you. Okay, sorry, we just had input from students that they wanted to play.
Moving on to Phase Two, as far as the interior renovations, lots going on, the inside looks nothing like what it normally does. It's broken up in separate areas, so I'll try to make them as brief as I can. The Area Two, which was the old admin area, is now going to be new classrooms, all that demolition is complete, we're already framing walls and putting drywall up, we should start taping by the middle of this week and be done with that, and then sealing and finishes will start, so that area is wrapping up fairly quickly. The next area, which is Area Three, is the commons area, we no longer have a depressed floor, it's totally flat. We have heating and cooling, ductwork going in, it's about, I'd say 75% complete, and then the fire sprinkler work is nearly done, they have all the mains ran, they just have branches left to do from the mains, and then ceilings will start up next week on that. 3A, which is the kitchen area, is, has just a big old hole in it right now for doing underslam piping, but we're going to hopefully get that inspected this week and get it poured back. Waiting for some parts and pieces for the grease trap, but other than that, it's moving forward, we're going to be okay. Just to the north of that is where the, out in the big corridor, we're putting in the freezer pad for the freezer and the coolers for the kitchen, and the ceilings are down in that area, and we'll get everything put back there. In the fieldhouse is probably the biggest change, we have 20-foot-high concrete masonry walls already up with metal studs and drywall all the way to the peak of the roof, so it looks a lot different than it did two weeks ago. And we're going to put FRP on the gym side of the fieldhouse to clean that up a bit, and then we'll eventually be ready to put in bleachers. And then the old industrial arts area, we had a bunch of CMU walls to take down, those are all complete, and we started framing in there, and by the end of the week, we should start drywalling, so we're moving forward, we're on schedule. It's looking good, lots happened in two weeks, so... Dave was surprised.
I was impressed.
That's all I got, if anybody had any questions on those.
Let me move you backwards to Phase One just for a brief minute. The top sheet, not a lot of change on this project, these are Phase One, you know, Cory went through the three addition projects, as they complete out, we'll be able to update this sheet. Changes are pretty much staying the same, I think we only added some cost to just a couple of the projects, I think, two additions this last time, so the other projects that are remaining, the Ball HVAC project, it's getting real close, we're still waiting for a little bit of paperwork on that to finalize it out. And the other ones, same thing, mostly paperwork, I think most of the work is done in that regard. Moving on to, any more, any questions about Phase One? Moving on to Phase Two.
Mike, why don't you touch on parking lot and drive replacement at Ball Elementary bringing up the state?
Yeah, we have, we do have just a little bit of work at the east approach to complete, that's out at Route 66, that entrance, we got caught last winter, we didn't get that approach in, and it went gravel all winter long. We're trying to get the concrete in, we're working with the county highway department, there's some issues with that, we have to do a little bit, they want some extra drainage associated with that originally, we weren't doing anything, we weren't even going to replace the culvert, that culvert is in, was in kind of high, and it didn't allow us to get, what we were planning to put was concrete over the top of it, the county does not like us to use concrete just at the 20 or 30 feet width of those approaches, mainly because they can deal with asphalt easier than they can chopping up concrete if there's a problem. So we recognize that, and we did get asphalt in at New City Road on the west side, that one's done, so we still have that issue to correct there, we're working with the contractor. They have some other issues along Route 66 farther from the east approach to the south, they want us to dig that ditch out for them for better drainage, it's really not part of this parking lot work, but you know, they're the county, they're the county engineers, so we're trying to satisfy them, so that's in process, so... Most of the rest of the work is done, there may be a punch list item or two that the contractor still needs to take care of there, so...
So that, Mike, that Route 66 approach will be asphalt also?
It will be asphalt, and we don't have a choice, we would prefer to, we'd prefer to have them both concrete, but they're making us do asphalt, so we think concrete holds up better, especially with turning buses and so on, but...
So it could just be tore up again down the road, very short amount of time, couldn't it?
Steve, whatever is the reason why they do it, it's because their plows, their plows don't get damaged when it hits asphalt, it won't get damaged if it's concrete.
So whose responsibility is it to keep replacing that approach if it keeps getting tore up ours or theirs?
It's ours. It's yours. Now, good news at the high school, although we're not doing it, you know, that's one of our Phase Two projects that we've started on, that's going to be concrete, because that doesn't have county jurisdiction on Plumber Road there, so we're able to do concrete for you there, that'd be our choice, you know, but they're overruling this, so...
And so what, eight foot wide, or eight foot long, I guess, between the concrete and 66, eight, 10 feet?
It's more than that.
It's more than that.
Is it?
Yeah, it's probably 30 feet or so.
Oh, is it really? Okay.
Well, what kind of a timeframe are we looking at for that being completed?
Well, we want to get it before school starts again, they were on us, they were on us in March trying to get, we were trying to get the asphalt plants open this spring, you know, in that timeframe, so there are some drainage issues out there, and putting in a couple of extra drainage tiles that they want, we'll have that out, so I'm really not involved in that directly, Tom Hyde with our office has really been handling that, so...
The reason I ask that to be brought up, this may involve some change orders, because there'd be some extra cost due to the, what the county's asking us to do, to relieve the water running off the fields, they're asking us to add a couple of extra drains, and to shake the ditch, ditch line all the way from the culvert that we're talking about all the way down to the corner of 66 and New City Road, so...
So the county is asking us to pay to put drainage?
As a result of the work we're doing on the access, they're saying because we moved the culverts, we've now, because we did it, and they're now saying that we need to cut the ditch line back because of all the excess dirt that's from construction that's falling into that space in the ditch line, so they're asking us to clean it out.
They took care of the ditch all the way along the west side of 66 last summer, they were working on that, but I think they kind of had enough, and when it got down to us, they're expecting us to take care of it, so...
And forcing us to use asphalt?
Pardon me?
And forcing us to use asphalt?
Yeah, we don't have a choice there.
So that's what they say we need to do, we need to do, is that correct?
Yes. We don't have any wiggle room. Phase Two, Cory went through the GIS interior project very well, and that project is, you know, all the demolition is done in that project, and now we're already, we're three weeks into this Phase Two work, and we're in the putback mode on that project, so it's moving very well, I don't anticipate any problems at this time getting the school ready for start of school in August. If you go down through the list, or you've got these, this handout here, it might be a little easier to look at, I listed, there's seven projects in Phase Two, the GIS interior one was listed first, Cory went through that, the next one is the restroom renovations at Chatham, GIS, and the middle school, that project is coming along very well too, all of the demolition is complete in all those bathrooms, they're all tore up, and they've started the rough ins back for the plumbing fixtures, as well as the putback of the masonry walls that need to be patched back. So that's coming along very well too, I don't foresee any problems with that project as well. I've listed also a handful of, some of these projects have a handful of changes that have arisen already, I don't have even numbers for some of them, because we've only got started on this, and it's, we're only three weeks into it, but you can see here, you can read them for yourself, some of the things that are coming up. At Ball Elementary School and at the middle school, the next project is the flooring replacement, Ball is probably at least 95%, maybe more, completed with the flooring, we were also doing some painting of the inside of the outside wall, that was a result of when we patched the walls last summer for taking out the mechanical units that were in each classroom. This year, we're, we just temporary painted them, primed them last year, this year we're painting the whole wall to make it look complete. All that work is done, and we got one classroom really at Ball, that's the south end classroom in what used to be part of the old auditorium when the old building was still there, way back when it was new, Classroom 127, we have a little dab of abatement work to remove the floor tile that's in that room, that'll happen, it was supposed to start today, but the abatement contractor's delayed, he'll be there next week, and get that done, then we can complete that, I think we've got a little bit of cabinet work to do in three of the pre-K rooms there at Ball also, and they won't be pretty much away from Ball then, I think it's gone very well, so... At GMS, the contractor started the east front pot area in the old, in the 55 portion of the building, that flooring is down, 99% complete, they started today after abatement in the west pot area, that includes the old home ec room and three classrooms in that portion of the building, they'll be in there another few days, and they'll get that completed. We still have to do the library at GMS, the abatement schedule on that is just a little bit later, but that carpet will be installed in that library after that abatement work is done. We had, this flooring project had a few extra requests for some additional painting, so we missed some of the painting of some of the outside walls at some of the unit ventilator locations where we didn't have flooring going on, we just missed them, so we've got those walls painted, there's a handful of items on that. GMS HVAC project, that's getting a geothermal mechanical system, the well field is complete, all the wells are dug, they still have to get the piping into the building, all of the demolition, ceiling, old ductwork, pipes, and things that were in the way have been removed, and they've started putting back the ductwork and the mechanical systems in there. It's started off kind of slow, that's a contractor, that's a Decatur contractor that's kind of getting used to working around here a little bit, but he's coming on strong, and I think there's not going to be any problem with that project either, so... GIS HVAC, that project is the same contractor that did Ball last summer, E.L. Pruitt from Springfield, they were in there well before school was even out for the summer, in evenings measuring, so they've got, all their ductwork is hanging, all of their fan coil or mechanical units are suspended, everything's insulated, they've got their refrigerant piping and condensate drains to do yet, but this is in the fifth grade wing, you know, that 1992 L-shaped addition out in front, that project, that portion of the work will complete first, they started today setting up to drill the wells that go alongside the football field within the fence, so those will be going in very soon, probably starting tomorrow, I think they were mobilizing today. There's also some other ductwork and mechanical systems work that happens in the older part of the 76 building, the contractors are well underway with that stuff too. The contractors are well underway with that stuff, too. I see that project is completing early, very much like Ball did last summer. The Glenwood High School parking lot and drive, anybody that's driven by there, the contractor's out there today putting in drainage tile in the west lot. They have already completed the seal coating and crack repair and paint striping around the north, a drive loop, the asphalt drive around that portion of building, that's done. It's already turned over and we're using that. They started in the west lot. They milled out all of the asphalt in the bus drive, the L-shaped bus drive lane on the west side. They put their rock in, or they lime stabilized the subgrade in that area. They're putting their drain tile in now, and they've got piles of rock that they'll put in there, and then I think the plan is to pour that with concrete early next week. We need to return, or return the, turn over the west lot for parking before we start on the east lot. But that contractor's really hit the ground running, doing a fine job so far, so we should be in good shape on that one, too. A last project I have here is the roof replacement. We've been averaging, with the recent rains, we've been averaging about three days worth of work out of the five-day work week, and that's just because of the rain. It is what it is, you know, we're gonna, the more we get into summertime, the rains will hopefully curtail a little bit so we can get some more days in. You know, that's the project that, that the old part of the building has the asbestos on it, and so the abatement contractor is out there working at night, and it's followed up by the roofing contractor in the daytime. They have completed the roof in the 92 fifth grade wing. That work, that new rubber is on that roof. That didn't have asbestos involved, so they were doing that while the abatement contractor was taking off the roof, abating the roof around the circle end of the building. We're about halfway around the circle end of the building getting the abatement off. And we did have some leaks last year, or last week with the rain. Custodians have taken charge with that. They have spent some extra time. They're going to build a contractor for that. Contractor is aware of it. He's got some ceiling tile to replace and the time that the custodians spent cleaning up some messes. I looked at the roof before they, you know, the abatement contractor took off the insulation. They pulled the rubber back, they put the rubber back down, and they steamed all that rubber in. I looked at it when they, after they did it, and it looked pretty doggone good to me, but one of the problems we got is the structure of that building slopes to the outside, and when you get to the outside edge, there's some wood blocking that kind of makes a little dam. Well, they notched it, each one of the pie shapes, they notched it several locations, but it wasn't enough. We got most of the water in the building around the perimeter, but there were some areas where there were some little bird mouths and some seams that didn't quite get corrected, but, you know, the carpet, some of the carpet got wet. Custodians know how to deal with that. They already had, they had their fans set up in the area already for some cleaning of the carpet, but I see no problems with getting whatever the damages were resolved, so. Things are moving, we're three weeks into 10 weeks. We gave until August the 8th, realizing that there's a week beyond that before school really starts, but, you know, custodians like to have that time, too, to
The teachers.
Get things really shipshape. But right now, we're moving along, so.
I'd like to back up to the roof replacement topic. I did meet with Mr. Kenny today, and we talked about the reclaimed milk asphalt that he's bringing up off the, where he's pulling the asphalt out. In addition to that, he's pulling a lot of rock out from underneath that base, and it does contain a lot of mud, but he said it would be very usable for some things that we've got, some special projects. I'd like to talk about one of those special projects as a part of this discussion because they got to make a decision on what we do with this milk product as he brings it out. Either he hauls it off and charges us, or we find someplace to put it and utilize it. For the last three years that I know of, I've been talking about adding a rock parking area to the south side of the practice soccer field. And if you noticed, if you drive by on Plummer and look at that area, the kids, the parents, camps, all use that area to pull into just south of the fence, and when they do, and it's conditions like it is currently, they just rut it up, and we have a difficult time mowing, and we got to go in and straighten the dirt out, reseal, it's a mess. The problem was in the past is the dollars to procure the rock or the milk product. We now have that available, a lot of it, and we'd like to go ahead and utilize that rock and that milk product to build up that area for a rocked parking area.
The area he's talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So with your permission?
Because we tried to put no parking signs up there, but everybody parks there anyway because there's really no good way to get there, to that field, without parking in the high school parking lot.
Exactly.
Actually, I've seen people lately really parking on that street and then crossing Plummer to, you know, find a place to park.
Give a little extra area, a rocked area for McGriffen games and those types of things.
Yeah. How many parking spots do you think we could put there?
Well, we've got about 150 tandem loads of milk product plus the rock, which Mr. Kenny says we should put down first and then put the milk rock product over the top.
Okay.
That'd make a pretty good base for small vehicles, cars that can have all the milk on it, so.
Where's that, Millings at now?
He's got it at his place, willing to bring it back, but we've got the Millings from the whole east side to do yet, and that, he thinks that's another 100 tandem loads.
So would we get a credit to our contract for?
Actually, no, Carrie, because we told them that we have a place to put the Millings to put it.
We're just getting permission.
What we've done, we've actually gone ahead and filled those areas up already, so.
Okay. So if not, we're going to have to increase our, we're going to pay them?
Yeah, it would cost us more money if we can't find a place to put this stuff.
But that stuff has value, too.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Millings, $8.95 a ton. That's good stuff.
So.
We can find somebody else to load it off, huh?
We can either capture the material. Problem is, we don't have a good place to store it. With what we've got coming up next year with Millings, we're going to have somebody trucking it off one way or another. So my suggestion right now, with this plan in place, that we could start building up a parking area, and at some point in time, somebody's going to want to come in and oil and chip, and that'd be real nice and accessible where it currently is not.
Makes sense, because people are parking there anyway, you know? And there's no place else to park.
It'd be a good close place to get rid of it and utilize.
Yeah.
It's close, that's.
We're never going to build on that.
It won't cost us money to get rid of it. That's another consideration, because when I looked at this, just to fill the rock in from the corner to corner on the fencing, it was $25,000 to get some CA6 pulled in two years ago, and that got shut down.
So what would this cost?
There may be a little cost to removing the first six inches of.
You need to strip it, probably.
Dirt.
So we just don't put it on top of grass out there.
Yeah, but after we do that, you know, the material's all ours, and they're willing to bring it in.
They'll bring it in.
And, you know, our people can actually push it around, so.
She was talking about that the other day, it'll be some pretty.
If it makes sense, I'd like to proceed with that.
How do you strip sod? You just get a machine?
Grader. Yeah, they'll use a grader or bulldozer.
They've got all the equipment there right now. They're willing to do it.
Will Kenny contractors do that?
Yeah, they'll take that.
They're going to do a lot of change orders.
So you want that dirt, then?
No, we're going to keep the dirt. We're going to keep all the material. We'll find a place for the dirt, right there on the side.
All right. Any other questions on?
Go ahead.
Do we need to?
This is new information, just came out today.
Pretty minor, right? Do you need action on it? How much are we talking?
I do. I suspect, I suspect the cost of stripping the first six inches would probably be around 10 grand. But that's better than us paying 25 to get rid of the dirt.
So should we authorize up to $10,000? So we need a motion authorizing stripping of sod to prepare surface for parking lot?
I think you ought to do it at the house, isn't that the district? I think you ought to do it at the house.
So we need a motion to begin this work. Thank you, Jim. Second?
Second.
Betsy, would you please call the roll?
Carter. Yes. Tom. Maddox. Naces. Weitzel. Yes. Morley. Yes. Meyer.
Yes. Thank you. All right, thank you.
That's really, you know, we went through the roof replacement project. That's the end of the projects. The only other comment that I might make is I'm again giving you, although there's no change on it, Phase 3 work, which is just a listing of projects that still needs to be finalized by the committee, but we're just trying to track them to give you kind of an idea of what we think the costs are for those projects. And we haven't, we haven't done any more on that. With David being gone, the committee hasn't met, so, but we're poised to do that now and get back into it, so.
Any other question?
I'd just like to ask the principals of these two buildings that are here that we're working on, are you guys happy and content with the progress and the conditions of the way things are right now?
Absolutely. Yes, and in fact, I invite you, when they talked about, I have to beg to differ with Corey about the huge differences in the fieldhouse, if you walked into the cafeteria, you would be awestruck. It's amazing how huge it is and how excellent it's going to be to feed all of our students, all, one grade level at one time.
Steps were very inefficient, weren't they?
They were, but, you know, that was the timeframe. That was the 70s. We liked steps in the 70s, I guess, but the fact that we are able to feed all of our sixth grade students at one time is increasing our instructional time, so if you can come in that back door, of course, with your hard hats and steel-toed boots. There's some amazing differences. You'd be pleased.
And to that point, I want about the end of July, we typically have a board tour.
I was going to ask that.
We'd like to offer that again.
Ready for us to see.
I'll make sure we have hard hats and safety glasses, and we'll set up a time. I'll get work with Carrie on that.
Do you have a show?
So, it's great. I've been impressed, especially this summer with how it's been. People have been in and out, getting the job done. It looks great, so, been very happy.
I've got to add one point, not to want to give you shit, but Mike and Corey and Dale have been at our disposal at any given time when I've had trouble on Saturdays or Sundays or whatever, when there was water pouring in. They have both come in and said, so thanks to them.
See, Mike, I really like this additional sheet that you provided in addition to this, so could you continue to do that, please? Betsy, is there any way we can get this up on, is there any way that when Mike is walking through these various schedules that people could look at it? Because I don't think these are on WordBack. He needs to send that to Joe.
With David being gone this time.
Okay, perfect.
We didn't have a chance to get it to David, but they can be scanned in.
And they can be scanned in even tomorrow and have it up there.
No, I mean for people tonight, so they could look through this while.
We can do it tomorrow, probably.
Yeah. But in the future.
We'll do an update for every.
Typically, we do, it's just.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hit the highlights so you know what's going on, so.
Okay, so that's great.
All right, with that, we will move to financial.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have the fiscal year 15 fee schedule.
Do you want to stay at the construction conversation?
You're sorry?
Before they go? Well, maybe Mike, I don't know if you want to stay for that. Sorry, I just didn't want to.
We've got a construction conversation coming up in just a few minutes, so.
I'll be brief if you want.
No, I just want to make sure we didn't.
So 10.1, fiscal year 15 fee schedule.
Sure, so we wanted to bring back the à la carte items, there were a couple of questions about like some of those that have just a dollar amount at the bottom. We talked to the cafeteria managers, and they provided the items there at the bottom that generally fall in those categories, and it can happen, you know, some of those may even have their own category already, but they end up being coded under the dollar amount figure. Sometimes there's a sub cashier, or just due to the speed of it, sometimes someone just codes something there, but these were the items that they said fall into those dollar amount categories. So when you're, when you're looking for pizza, for example, while there isn't a line, oddly enough, for pizza, they lump them together, might put two slices for, you know, into one item, one price, you know, two-for-one kind of thing. That's where they're, where you're seeing these coded. So this gives you a little more clarity on those items. So, and then we also wanted to, what we originally provided to you was just the flat 50 cent increase, again, just as a model, but to show you what that would be. Received some great feedback from that, and so using that feedback also provided you some more scenarios here of, if you wanted to just do a percentage increase on any of these, again, sort of, this does assume a flat percentage across all of those items, so you certainly could modify this in any way we want, but it shows you if there was a 25% increase, what would that new dollar amount be, 30, 40, and 50? Just to give you some, again, options as a board in areas to increase the à la carte items, and these are the bulk of the ones that get the majority of the use during the year, so they're the ones that you're going to see the greatest impact on return by raising the price a little bit. So, looking for feedback or, not interested, you know, if there's still more discussion that needs to be done, you've still got some time, absolutely, to make a decision even into July, so it doesn't have to be done tonight, but the current prices are in the, on the left in the green. The FY14 column, that's where they'd be until the board decides to take action on it.
I guess partially my fault because I should have like gone back afterwards and taken a look at it, but one of the suggestions I had is that the less healthy items had a larger price increase than the more healthy items have a smaller price increase. I don't know if the kids pay any attention to it at the high school about how much something costs, if it's, if you want to be selling something at $1.63, you know, it seems to me that, I don't know if they care, it just kind of goes through their card, or people, or if it's easier to round things up, but that was kind of what I was looking for, and I apologize, I can easily take, I don't, you know, go through it.
And we don't have to have action tonight. We were just talking about, conceptually, we were looking at, Patrick and I were talking about the, you know, the increase of chips from 50 cents to a dollar, or the small water is another good example, from 50 cents to a dollar, if we're just adding 50 cents to everything, it kind of made that seem like it was a big jump, so we, you know, we put together the percentages just for your consideration, so there's no need for us to rush this decision.
Not emergency tonight, but.
It can wait until July.
More information for you to consider.
You want to look at it, but that's one way to look at it, that increase some of the.
Sort of a tiered approach.
Items that aren't as healthy, maybe.
You know, is, I think I remember when Kimya spoke to us about, you know, when I had mentioned what about the high school, and she said, oh, no, we're not going to. But, you know, this is a way to kind of force people, if, well, of course, this is assuming the kids pay any attention, but the parents, if they actually pay attention to what their kids, you know, I'd rather triple the size of soda and leave the price of water alone.
Sure.
I guess this is kind of.
Okay. We can go back and look at that again.
Absolutely.
So what we've got here is the proposed, the first proposed column is adding 50 cents to everything, and then the next four columns add 25, 30, 40, or 50%.
Percent over the existing price. Again, it's just a flat across the board as a model.
And we want to talk a little more about possibly weighting the pricing.
Sure.
All right, any other questions?
Lisa, do you think, excuse me, Lisa, do you think it would be, would you be willing to take a first shot at what you would like for, you know, take a first shot at what you think, you know, the healthy foods would be?
We can do that administratively. That's okay.
Okay, whatever.
Bring it back to you.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, let's just, let's take a first shot using Lisa's approach.
Sure, absolutely.
Which I agree.
Yep. Sure.
So this is all good discussion resulting from, actually, as a response to our audit to really get into the cafeteria spending and food spending to make sure that we can get that on a break-even basis, and it's actually been a very good exercise finding where the deficiencies have been in the past, but it's my understanding that we've also, you know, discovered some efficiencies in the way that we order and the way that we stock and relooking at the needs for certain quantities of food that's going to result in some savings. quantities of food that's going to result in some savings moving forward. You know, the old days, this is what we did in the past, and we keep doing it moving forward, and you got a closet full of cheese. So this is causing us to look and think and be a little smarter about how we're buying things. So that's going to save some money, and those are painless savings as well. So these conversations might seem trivial on the surface, but when we peel back, we can do things better without cutting. All right, so thanks for your work.
Yeah, absolutely. This is all good feedback, and this will help us get you to a place where you're comfortable with the decision. Absolutely.
All right, so 10 dot two, the treasurer's financial report.
That's if you want. I'll drive on this one.
Very good.
I'll start you with the familiar charts, so we'll start with the expenses, if you will. Keep in mind is this is through May. This still shows the original budget column. Since you just took action tonight on a revised one. This is through May. Am I, did I not come up?
No, it's, okay, well.
Okay. Can you open up the May expense one, I guess, for me?
I'm actually trying to transfer it over to you.
Got it.
I don't know, I don't.
Okay. So again, 90, about almost 92% of the year through our fiscal year, where we were a year to date, a year ago, where we are this year, and what our current budget, again, the original budget adopted back in September was. So your operating funds, just as a, you know, we're tracking at about total, you know, about 87%. So still within, you know, overall guidelines and tracking about where we anticipated for it. Obviously, we had the revised budget, so there were a few changes in there, but really tracking pretty good for the year. So expenses in line with where we anticipated, really. Revenues, happy to say, I'll just kind of jump down here at the end for just a moment, the state was actually current.
What?
I don't know.
Current iteration, right?
I don't know. It is what it is. So we've gotten every dime from them that they vouchedured, and nothing was waiting at the comptroller, and what do you do? So we are where we are. So other than that, I just wanted to show you that because that hasn't ever happened since I've been here. So they're being a little more current. That's good.
So I'm seeing some pretty low numbers on the percentage of budget received.
Yeah, keep in mind, again, it's revenues because May, you're starting to see just a little bit, the very little of that early tax. June was a huge number for the tax dollar amount. You'll see that in the next month's report. You can see the realization, yeah. June was when you see the bulk of your tax money, which accounts for, again, revenue because of our cash basis, and we record it when we receive it. Majority of that comes in late June.
So this week?
Some today.
Yeah, Friday and today, we got it.
Thank you.
So, and it was ahead of where we anticipated, so it's all positive for the June 30th ending dollar. Yes, so it's not atypical to find revenues tracking behind the percentage of the time you're in because you only get it, you only get your revenues largely in certain times of the year. And then the charts, if you will, that I know look like a lot, but I actually kind of enjoy this. The dotted blue line, of course, is our expenses have been tracking consistently below where we were a year ago. So that's good for you to see that the changes and the authorizations and reductions you made a year ago, you're realizing consistently throughout the year. The green is the revenues, and you see the big spike there in June because that's when you get a large influx of cashes right in June, unfortunately. But we've been tracking almost dollar for dollar pretty much every month regularly throughout the year. And the dark brown bar here is, of course, current fund balances. And the red is where, by board policy, we really want them to be at any one time. June, you'll see that spike back up.
And we dipped a little bit in May, but we're better than previous years.
So, questions?
Are we, may I ask you, are you going to pull up the fund report? Could you pull up the fund report for just one second?
Sure.
Can you tell me, what's our, in June, have we need to draw upon our line?
We did.
Our line of credit?
We did.
And how much did we, how much have we drawn on today?
It's on in the bottom right corner.
Yeah, it's bottom right.
This is through May.
Yeah.
We had two draws in the middle. We had a $400,000, and then literally the very next day, we were able to pay it off.
Right.
It has to do with the timing of influx of general state aid and early tax money.
And the interest was like 40 some dollars.
Yeah, 40 some dollars. We had a follow-up, and then we had a follow-up draw again later in the month of 500.
Right.
And then we had draws. Didn't bring that number with me for June. You'd see that in the June report, and we've already paid that off.
Okay, so right now, we're, we have no.
So we're back. We have no line of credit. I mean, we have no principal or interest on line of credit. We're completely paid in full. And the, so we only, we did not access the full 4 million at every one time. So we were, while we asked to have more as a cushion, we didn't, because of, again, I think with some of the land sale and some of the way the revenues have been coming in this year, and again, with the reductions in expenses that we made last year with the budget reduction efforts, you were seeing that we didn't need, and because we had more in our working cash fund, we borrowed more.
Right.
Borrowed money. We didn't access as much of the line of credit as we did the year before.
So the draw on the line of credit, what was the highest amount? Is it the 500 or in the previous?
No, we end up with around 1.5.
Okay.
Again, just to cover board bills and repayables and payroll. That's all been paid back. And we've incurred less interest than we did a year before as well. So we accessed less, paid less interest.
Right.
Which was what we were, is the direction you wanted it to go, even though we asked for more to be available just in case.
That's good.
So you'll see the other numbers in June.
So that says remaining 3.5, but.
Because as of May 31st, that was correct.
Okay.
As of today, zero.
Okay.
We have the full 4 million if we needed it.
This is updated monthly?
Yes. So I just wanted to give you a snapshot as of that month end to be consistent with the other number.
Thank you, Patrick. Other discussion questions on the treasurer's and financial reports? Okay, if no, then I'll need a motion to approve the treasurer financial reports.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Susan. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. Betsy, would you please call the roll?
Whitehall. Yes. Worley. Yes. Carter. Yes. Cup. Bats. Nusis. Tina.
Yes. Thank you, Patrick. All right, moving on to new business, mechanical supply bids.
Good evening, Al. I didn't see you back there.
He's hiding behind the wall there.
I'm a cubby hole usually, so just, we've sought bids as we have requested at the annual meeting. Usually do bids late May, early June for the July, July 1st through the June 30th period. These are the bids that we have received. In the past, we have normally received four or five different bids. This year, we only got two. We, after the fact, we contacted a couple of bidders who, who we didn't receive a bid from. One bidder indicated that they had never received anything. They were always a high number, and they only bid on a very small few items. So they didn't bid. One of the other vendor, one of the other vendors wasn't prepared. They've got some changed ownership, and so they were trying to work through their own numbers and didn't bid. And a third one, we received in the mail like two days after bid. So we've actually only got two bids. Fortunately, these two vendors do about 95% of our business anyway, so it didn't really affect bid numbers. Tried to analyze and look back to what we paid last year, and the numbers are very, very similar. They're up a little bit, but they're very similar. So the recommendation is that we accept the bids that are highlighted in yellow for each of the products from the, from the assigned vendors. Yes, sir.
At page two, you've got, the one thing, you've got horns here, high tone, low tone?
Uh huh.
And we took the high price instead of the low price, is there a reason?
Um, no, that would be an error. I will correct that.
Okay.
My apologies.
Can you notice?
So with that correction, thank you. I looked over that, you know, how many times you look at something over and over and you see the same thing, so that is actually an error.
So their motion could be just to accept the low bid on all of these, right?
Yep.
And that's accurate? Okay.
That would be correct.
Even though the highlight's different? Okay.
The highlighted is to, was to make it easier for you guys.
I think just for their motion like that, that's fine.
Yep, that would be correct.
I only make one observation. Do you note how when one company makes a price bid, the other company does not, and it's pretty much true throughout the whole schedule?
You know what's, typically, that's, when we have four or five bidders, that's not the case.
Right.
But for the most part, each of these vendors supply certain products, and it is the case in this case, if you look back to previous years when we've had four or five bidders.
Right.
We usually get four or five prices, three or four prices on every product.
Okay.
It, I did look at that, and it is a little unusual, but for the most part, these two vendors pretty much supply what the other one doesn't anyway. But that's, I have the same observation, so that's, it's not surprising. We did not, by the way, we did not open the bid that we got a couple of days later, even though they called us and asked us to open it, we, I did not open it. And it's, it's one of the vendors that we have used in the past, but, and they recognized that they were late getting it to us. But, so it may, it may down the road affect, you know, some prices, a few items, but obviously we can't, we don't, I don't think we want to throw out all the bids just to be able to allow another bidder to bid, so.
Are you going to go back out for bid for these that didn't have on either contractor?
There are, probably not. There, we buy so few of those things, it's something that we have on our bid list. Typically, what we do is we call, for example, there, I think there's a couple Mercedes, we have a Mercedes engine, there's a couple Mercedes filters. We can only buy them typically one place. And we, we call to get prices, but typically only one supplier is able to get that particular filter. There's no alternate filter that's, that's available for that. If that's what you're talking about, I think there's maybe only be one or two items.
Yeah, I saw that.
So on those ad hoc purchases, your shopper.
Right. We, we usually always, if it's, even if it's something that's not on here that we have to buy, we always go out and get at least two prices. Typically, we try to get three. We don't always have three suppliers. Some things are very proprietary based on the product, so we don't always get multiple prices. But there are some things we just have to, we just have to call them in order of a part, a piece. So, yes, if, if you would make the motion to take the low price, that would be.
I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to approve the low bidder in each category of the mechanical supply bids. Thank you, Jim. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brendan. Betsy, would you call the roll?
Yes. Worley. Yes. Carter. Yes. Cup. Yes. Nusis. Yes. Whitehall. Yes. Tina.
Yes. New business 11 dot two, addition of GMS GHS assistant principal.
As you note in the document there, that's posted, the board description, that there were two administrative positions that were eliminated in February of 2013 with our reductions. And one was the high school associate principal position, and the other was the middle school assistant, one of the middle school assistant principal positions. And after having a lot of conversation with administrators about what pressures they're feeling, how they're able to support staff, the things they can and can't get to because of the increased demand on their time, we really talked a lot about the possibility of adding one position back to replace those two positions, so that it would be a shared position between two buildings. And really felt like that that was something that would give our principals a better opportunity at the middle school and high school to be instructional leaders, the instructional leaders they want to be and, and should be by definition. They're just being pulled in so many different directions that this is just a, an additional support to them. So that would be, you know, previously, we were spending over $180,000 on those two positions, plus then benefits for both of those positions, and we would reduce that down to one position in the, in the range of approximately $65,000 plus benefits for just one person. In that same conversation, we're really looking at restructuring the assistant superintendent position in order to try to find some other ways to reduce costs. You know, every time, we've said this before, that every time we get a resignation or retirement, we try to look at, should we, one of three things, should we replace as-is, restructure, or eliminate the position? And we've done that with several positions throughout the year, as well as last year. We also did that with several different positions, and so that's another one that we're still having some conversations about what that might look like, but we really look at that as a position where we could, again, save some money, just like we, you know, had looked at the 180,000 from our budget reductions of FY, or February of 13 that were voted on.
Explain what, do you know what those, what those positions would actually look like?
It's just one position.
Right.
But yes.
The duties of that position at each building would look like?
Right. The, the middle school, or I'm sorry, the, the current principals, Jim and Tina and their, their assistants have had some conversation about that, and we have too, in looking at the job descriptions of a current, of an assistant principal and what this might look like. And we really looked at, you know, just offsetting some of, you know, some of the discipline and some of the assessment pieces that they can, they can have some more support for in those two positions. We do have the possibility of also moving someone currently an assistant principal maybe to that position and then hiring a new, or kind of looking at that, what that might look like if someone might be interested in that. So there's been some possibility, possibility of, you know, some interest in doing something like that. So it would really just be based on the current job descriptions of what, what we have assistant principals do. Currently, a lot of student discipline, evaluation of teachers, we all, all of our principals and assistant principals split up the, the list of teachers and coaches to evaluate, so that would be another person to help with that. And, you know, special ed topics and things, so it would just be another support for them, another team member.
You know, it's always problematic when a single person has two bosses, and I'm sure the demand, I'm sure really each building could use another full-time AP. So how, how is that going to be worked out between the two schools? I mean, is it like Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they're physically at one school, and then the next week?
We've talked quite a bit about that, actually, and I think it'll evolve, but what we foresee is setting some type of structure, but it's got to be fluid for that person. We can say Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday here, Thursday, Friday here, but that person's going to have to go where they're needed. So I think it puts some structure to it, but give them the fluidity of if they're needed So I think it puts some structure to it, but give them the fluidity of if they're needed here, they need to be here. And so I really think it'll evolve as we go on through the year to see what it looks like. But we've hashed a lot of things around. I think we have some good ideas. But I see it really, what it starts out at the beginning of the year may look different than what it was like at the end of the year.
Well, I think this is an interesting proposal as far as not specifically replacing assistant superintendents with one person. But actually, I'm reticent to approve the assistant principal position tonight because I really think it's just one half of your entire proposal as far as divvying up the responsibilities of the assistant superintendent. And hiring the AP position is just a portion of that. And furthermore, you know, I'd like to see, I think there's been some verbal conversations, but when you divvy up the duties, then communication becomes really important. And what's...how's the transition plan? What does the transition plan look like? And then, so my preference is to see the whole proposal together. But perhaps I'm just in the minority.
Well, you said under new business that right now we're just addressing the addition of the assistant principal.
Correct. But if you approve the assistant principal position tonight, you are in essence voting not to replace the previous assistant superintendent.
I don't think that's true.
Yeah, I apologize if that's how it came across. I was just putting that as another caveat to that, but...
So you're suggesting that you could hire an assistant superintendent and assistant principal?
No, I really think that the assistant superintendent position can be restructured. And we've talked a lot about the possibility of some stipends for things such as Title I grants, you know, other ways to save money, because that's another approximately $150,000 that you're talking about that could be reallocated someplace else if we have some stipend work. But really, the conversation tonight is just about the...the action is just about the assistant principal position, this agenda item. I put that in there because that's something that I wanted to make sure that it was known that we are looking at restructuring that position as well, but...
So none of the duties that you're looking to put on these new, this new AP are tied to the...
Exactly.
Assistant superintendent?
Right, that's a really good point. Yeah, no, so that wouldn't be, I just, I guess I put that asterisk there just so that you understood and that that was very transparent, that we're looking at other possibilities for that position as well. But that those duties would not be put on this assistant principal for the middle school, high school. That is truly to replace those two positions that were reduced in February of '13. The one position would replace those two.
But actually, maybe you could just clarify this for me. Am I correct in saying that your proposal is to take the savings from what otherwise would be an employee as a 100% assistant superintendent, taking those savings and basically using, hiring an assistant principal, and then restructuring the duties of the assistant superintendent among current principals, but paying them a stipend? Is that correct?
That is what we're looking at. And, you know, whether you want to say that it's from the savings that we had from the $180,000 from previous years, or if you want to look at it as, I don't know that it matters so much which savings you want to say that this is being added from. But really, you know, my goal is to put as much support into the buildings as possible. You know, if you could, if there are ways to reduce central office and to add to the buildings, I think that's best for kids. And I think we're trying so, you know, in so many ways to make sure that something like that happens. And this is an opportunity when we have, you know, a resignation to look at. Can we restructure this in a way that puts more support back in the building? So the conversations were going on at the same time, so I don't, I think it's fair to say either or, you know, that if you want to look at, we had some savings from February of 2013, and we also potentially have some savings in the assistant superintendent in central office that we could have. So really, there are savings in both places, whether or not you want to say that's how we're funding it or the other way. It's...
Well, it's usually when you're trying to reduce your budget, it's usually good to carry those reductions forward. So, I mean, I would say that you really have to use it from the 2013, 2014...
Sure.
...reductions that you're trying to implement. Because to go back, to go back, then you're going to have a harder time balancing your budget for 2014, 2015.
Well, and I think, I think really the way that we look at it is that we've made some cuts. And along the way, we've said, you know, some of those cuts were a little too deep. And so we've restored some things at a minimal level. For example, with our teachers, we added back in, at the middle school and high school, we made some significant reductions in February of 2013. At that same time, we had 24 positions that were eliminated. And through that, this next year, we got input from teachers, and we decided that, you know what? Those cuts might have been a little bit too deep. And so we added back in three positions, and we restructured a little bit. Same thing has happened with this position. I went to the principals and I said, you know, you're living with budget reductions that were pretty significant, especially in those two buildings. And what is it that, how did that, how did that impact you? How did that impact kids? And I was hearing loud and clear from them that they were feeling the crunch of time because they simply weren't able to do the things that we want them to do, to be the instructional leaders that we want them to be, and be, you know, able to disaggregate data, to talk to teachers about where their students are. And so those are really important, I think, when you look at the principals and leaders of the buildings to say, you know, maybe we cut a little bit too deep. And had we to do it over again, maybe we would have said, you know, a better option would be to cut one position and share the other amongst two buildings. So I think all along, we've tried really hard to make reductions that make sense at the time, and then reflect on those and decide, is this, is this working? If it is, then let's keep going. If it's not, then let's revisit that conversation. And we've really tried to get input from teachers and all year long, through, you know, lots of conversations with teachers and then obviously with the principals because they know day to day what's important. And this is something that I heard loud and clear from them, that this was important. And so that's why we brought that proposal forward with a lot of thought behind it.
Well, I understand, you know, it's really hard coming out of the front gate, making reductions, and then realizing that maybe the reductions are, have been too severe. I understand that. But as far as, I guess I'm, I guess my question is, then going forward as far as your proposal for the assistant superintendency, are you pretty much deciding that you're going to split up the duties among the administration?
I'd bring that forward to you in July, so that we can still have some conversations. We've had, you know, initial conversations with the administrative team, and I want to make sure we do what, do it the right way. So I think there are lots of ideas about how we might be able to do that. And we've come up with some pretty good ideas. But I want to make sure that we're, you know, we really have vetted out all of that. So I plan to bring that forward tonight, but, you know, with more input, I think it's good to go back and look at it again, so...
Okay, so I guess one of my questions is, as a board member, am I... I mean, to me, I see actually three options. One, you don't replace assistant superintendency, except you divide up the duties and you give stipends, okay? Two, you find an interim solution, perhaps using an interim superintendent with the ultimate goal of replacing a full-time assistant superintendent in the '15, '16 year. I mean, if your intent is that you don't want a full-time assistant superintendent, then I'd sort of like to know that now.
Well, I want to caution that I've not said I don't want one.
Okay.
It's certainly easier to do our jobs if we have one. But I think we need to continue to look at our budget. You know, we need to continue to look at where we can cut. And I would be in favor more of cutting from central office than cutting from buildings. You know, because as we hear from principals, they have had that reduction. So technically, they still have one less than where they were before. But even if, you know, even if you add this back in, but, so it's not that we don't want it. It's not that we don't think it's important. I think we're just really struggling to try to find any and every way that we can make additional reductions along the way. And if there are ways to save and still get the work done, that's important, so...
Okay, so...
Try to think outside the box, so...
Okay, so am I correct in saying you would prefer to make the reductions and cuts at the district office level rather than at the building level at this point?
When possible. I mean, I think you have to look at the whole, you know, when possible.
Okay, yeah.
So if, you know, if we have to be lean, we try to be lean here with still making, you know, still getting the job done, obviously. There's a lot of, there's a lot of work and there's a lot of tasks. So I'm not saying that we can't, we can just eliminate and not have that position because there's a lot on that, on that position, you know, in terms of grants and, you know, those types of things that, there are other ways, though, too. When you look at adding back in, if we can add back in an assistant principal who's shared amongst those two buildings, then we can have the principals do more of those instructional leadership positions, you know, those roles of things that had been centrally taking care of by the assistant superintendent. So it's just kind of a different way of thinking. It's not necessarily the best answer, but neither is our budget, you know? That's not...
Well, I know, that's a really good point. I just, you know, I have this question to ask, and I don't know the answer, but is this district too large not to have an assistant superintendent in that, in not having one person fill that role?
That's a very good question.
Are we too large for this?
That's a very good question. I mean, there are some that do it, and there are some that, you know, have multiple assistant superintendents, you know? But there are all sorts of structures, because some may not have a CSBO, for example, so...
Right.
You know, it's just...
Well, I guess I would...
It's a very good question.
I would appreciate some industry data in that regard because to me, that's a very important question. I mean, I'd sort of like to know, are we...
I think unfortunately, and I hear you, I think unfortunately, we're facing times that are not like what we've had in the past. You know, I think if you look at like Luda districts, they do have assistant superintendents at this level. And we're one of the smaller Luda districts, but we're still a Luda district. So I'm not saying that it's not important. I'm saying that we're at a financial crisis that we hadn't had in the past. And when we have a resignation, you know, immediately we look at, do we need to replace it? And I don't want to jump to replace something just because we've always had it when we could try to think outside the box. And that's really what we've tried to do, is think outside the box. It may not be the answer, but like some of these reductions, we've made reductions thinking that it was the answer, and then we think, oh, this isn't getting done, or this isn't getting done, so we need to revisit that. And so, but those are all really good questions and things that we keep kicking around as a team, too, to make sure that it's all covered, so... And that we don't put too much pressure on any one person because someone has left. You can't make someone do two jobs either, so those are very good questions.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the recommendation to...
Assistant.
Assistant. Hire the assistant principal. This should be split between GHS and GMS.
A second. So a motion? Thank you, Lisa. Second, Jim. Betsy, would you call the role?
Cap.
Can we have some more discussion?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
I still feel like this position is hinging on us reducing the assistant superintendent position at a later point. And isn't assistant superintendent in charge of curriculum and instruction? Isn't that the meat of why we're here?
Absolutely.
And we've always had that position, or we've had instructional, director of instruction. I'd hate to mess with one person overseeing that role in this district. And I have a tough time...
And you know, that may be a tough vote that we'll have to make when Carrie comes back with her idea of what to do with assistant superintendent. That may be a tough decision. But I think right now, this is for the assistant principal position.
Right, but to help...
I don't see how they're tied together.
Well, I think, I think what I'm, I'm understanding Susan's point of view in that when we made, when you made the significant cuts that you made, that the intention would be to carry it forward in your budget in some way, shape, or form. And I don't see this assistant position as a savings based on the fact that we cut two assistants previously. Because in looking at the budget, we would assume that those dollars aren't coming back in. And I see where you guys are worried that by doing this, you've eliminated the possibility of the assistant superintendent because you're, we're seeing, or I'm seeing, the savings coming from that position. You see the confusion?
I do, yeah.
And I don't disagree that this position may be very, very well needed. We're also at a time when we're juggling several different, very dynamic situations here.
And I'm not so worried about the savings as the duties that these, this assistant principal position would be eliminating for our principals now so that they can help carry that assistant superintendent. An assistant superintendent curriculum instruction is important. And that's the, that's why we're here, I think, isn't it? For the kids and to break that position completely apart and have it taken over by a bunch of different hands is, I think there's a lot of stuff that's going to fall through the cracks, and we need one oversight on that.
And I see it differently. I think a lot of the stuff that we think might fall through the cracks might be better handled at the building level rather than at the central office level. Because the people in the buildings know more about what they need in curriculum and instruction than someone who may be looking at, you know, pre-K through 12. And you put the experts out there in the buildings that can do that.
And I agree, but didn't we just get done in the last several years trying to get all of our buildings back on the same page? And I feel like we're backing off and we could lose that cohesiveness again.
Well, but that's only if they don't talk.
Right.
And I know that that's, that's only if we don't have a coordinated effort. And I don't see that that's happening. But I think that you have to tweak it per building or per grade level.
Right.
And I think that's best done by the experts at those grade levels.
Right. And I agree, but I think, I think the assistant superintendent discussion needs to take place first before we do this. We're, I think, putting the cart before the horse.
The reason that we're needing, that we put this on the agenda tonight is that, I had planned to put both of them, but there was still some, some of the same, you know, thoughts that you're having. I wanted to make sure that we knew exactly where we were headed. But this position, if we're going to hire the assistant principal, needs to be posted now, or we're not going to get good candidates. I mean, really, if you're going to wait until, you know, July, our fear is that we'll not end up with good candidates because everybody's kind of settled into their positions and not applying for new jobs. So that was why we went ahead and put this on tonight, looking at, and I understand your thoughts, but it was really looking at, we had two positions, could we replace it with one? And then, you know, also having the caveat of there's, there's something to be done with saving some money in the assistant superintendent role. That's really kind of how our thought process went, but I understand the concerns, I do.
I've been listening and kind of watching this unfold. And my observation that is, you know, this is coming up from the, from the building principals. And what this proposal is trying to do is to address their time. And they don't have enough time to be the instructional leaders that they, that they want to be. And this is a response to their request for more time. It is an add-back of something that was, that was cut, but it's a more, more cost-effective add-back. It does diminish, you know, some of the long-term, you know, salary and benefit savings, but it is strengthening the instructional position of the stakeholders.
And I completely agree. I would just feel more comfortable if we had the assistant superintendent.
Yeah, I think they're separate conversations.
Discussion first. Because I was hearing that this was going to free up time for principals to maybe help with the assistant superintendent duties if they get broken up, so...
Sure.
Their curriculum instruction's important.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, we do have a motion and a second on the administrative recommendation that the assistant principal position be added.
They were at you, Steve.
Yeah, we started with you, I can start somewhere else, okay.
Oh.
And Betsy was calling the role?
No.
Newses?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
No.
Carter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes. And Carrie, it's my understanding that we would come back at a later date, maybe next month?
July.
Or after July?
Right.
And with more discussions on assistant superintendent?
Yes.
What all that would entail?
Yes.
Thank you.
And in that regard, Carrie, could you, Steve could provide some additional information focused to the... I know the data might be hard to find. The assistant superintendent is usually held by one person. And then, just to provide, since Steve mentioned the idea of continuity of communication, how you think that will be addressed?
Sure.
Because I imagine there's some areas where if you divvy them up by task, there have to be a few tasks that might be, that might require two people working on that task.
Absolutely.
Sure.
All right. Okay, moving on to 11 dot 3, construction conversation. And we added this to the agenda as response to a lot of information that's been out and talk that's been out regarding our conversation, regarding our construction. And specifically, we wanted to kind of have a level set here and look at where we are, the plan that was in place and the plan that we're, that we're following, and really address the needs of the district, which, you know, haven't changed. changed. You know, we still have a need for quality, quality buildings, still have a need for updated facilities in the science and in some of those areas. A lot of this plan was, was put in place with the, with the community, with the construction committee. The plan was, was put out for voter approval and has been done and we're, we're moving forward. And it's, it's always a good idea to take a look at where we are, how we got here and, and keep looking toward the future as to what's, what are our next steps and how do we keep, keep going? Because this is not a short-term proposition that we're in, it's a long, very long-term term proposal. So, with that.
Well, I, I basically like to thank you for putting this on the agenda and I would like to suggest that perhaps at this point, we go forward with looking at our bond referendum priorities with the help of an advisory committee. And I think I, I make that observation because a lot of things have changed in the last three to five years. For one, the state finances has changed, the district finances have changed, the enrollment, the student enrollment growth has certainly occurred, but it's never, it's never imprudent to check in with your original plan and see if there are adjustments that could be made, need to be made or, and I, I personally would appreciate having some advisory input from an advisory committee at this point. I may be in the minority here, but that is how I feel. Advising on what? Advising on the priorities of, for example, well, there is a wish list that's out there and I think it's, I hesitate for a group of seven members to make some very important decisions long-term without some of the advi, without some community input at this, at this point in time.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'm asking, before we move on and bid out more projects, before we steamroll on ahead, I would like to say, let's take, let's catch our breath and would the board be willing to have an advisory committee help gather and evaluate this information? Or do you want to make it just a board slash committee effort?
Um, the.
Is this concerning the $35 million referendum?
Correct.
We spend it all or do we not?
Correct. All sorts of questions.
With all sorts of questions, as far as what?
Do you want, okay, what is the priority of building for phase three? Perhaps the, there are other ways to get some of these projects done. You can use, you can get some of these projects done through health, life, safety levy. Do you want?
You can't. You can't do new construction with health, life, safety.
I know, but a lot of these projects, Jim, are repairs and replacement, which you can do with health, life, safety levies. Like, for example, abatement of asbestos. It can be done with bond money, but it can also be done through a health, life, safety levy.
Which is other bond money.
No, it's through your levy. Through your levy.
You have to sell health, life, safety bonds in order to provide, to provide that, that money to.
But, correct, but you can build the balance at its 10 cents per 100, right? That's in, in your levy history.
Right.
So, but the, the thing about that is that we do it over a period of time based on prioritizing health, life, safety projects.
Well, I think we've gone through a number of years where we've prioritized health, life, safety projects and we've pushed a lot of them back and are doing them as we, as we can. You know, this was a, the 35 million that Steve brought up was a referendum that was passed by the community and it was, there was a, a group of people, a referendum committee that put a plan together that I think the board is following when it comes right down to how we're spending that money. And, you know, it, there are like two, if, if you don't spend the money, there, you can't, it's got to be spent within five years of the, well, is it spent, Carrie, or is it sold?
No, it's sold.
Sold.
Bodies have to be sold.
Do we have, have a, have a time period that we have to spend it by?
I believe so.
Patrick?
There's a three year. Once you've sold that thing, you're supposed to.
Okay, so there's a three-year limit.
So, eight years out.
Eight years out.
Well, that's just wait till the fifth year to do it. But we've already.
We're conferring every.
Okay, okay. But, you know, it was, the 35 million was approved by the community to do the projects that were outlined at the time and we're well on our way through phase two, which should be completed this, by the end of this summer, pretty close to it anyway. And then we've got the phase three projects that, you know, these are projects that, that have been discussed for a number of years that we need, we needed this stuff and they were discussed, when the referendum committee got together and put together the plan and what we would need and how we should do it. And I think that that's, you know, that committee was made up with people in the community that, and I have not heard that there's been a, any concern that the money's not being spent correctly or for the right projects, that things aren't being done for the long-term betterment of this district. And for us to go and, you know, if we don't spend all of it, there's two ways you can do it. Well, you, there's only one way you can do it if you don't spend it all in that time period and has to give it back to the community.
Right, and I'm not necessarily saying you don't spend all 35 million. I mean, I agree. I, I originally, I do think that that was a possibility, but I also know that, I mean, I do think that the advisory committee, the referendum committee, since this has been a long process, might be interested in either suggesting that a greater voice be looked at for the remaining, where are we at? Eight million left, Patrick, is that correct?
A little over 11 million to.
Okay, a little over 11 million.
And I, I understand what you're saying, to get, to get viewpoints of other people, but a committee that we would say consult with, they're not an elected body. We are an elected body, that people elected us to represent them and they are free to let us know what their wishes are, if there's something that we're not doing right, or if there's something they would like to change on that. I think we're the representative body and I think we could kind of advocating, advocating some of that responsibility. And it seems that, that the list here, when I look at project on phase three, the largest one is the addition of the high school. Is that your biggest concern, Susan?
No, no. No, it's not actually. I mean, I've got, it's not my biggest concern. And basically, some different schedules were prepared and shown to me. That's not my big, my biggest concern.
What schedules?
I mean, just looking at the, there was the detailed one that was presented. I guess I'm wary of always presuming that we can't seek a community opinion. We could have a public forum. It's now, this, this plan is now over five years old.
It's the separate discussion. That's, that's under 11.4, which I think you're putting that up, where it's, that's kind of a new strategic plan, which I think is a great idea. The, the six-day summary data here, it's part of this construction conversation, so I'm, I guess I'm, if, if the concern isn't the high school addition, why is the six-day summary here, data here?
I asked for that. Linda asked, said it would be good information to have, you know, what our, what our enrollment is doing and wanted to have that as part of the conversation because the, the, the student population is, is a factor in, in us having the space and the appropriate classrooms for, for that. Not the only factor, you know, other factors are, you know, locker room expansion, having enough access for, for cleanliness and health.
Chem labs.
And the, the chemistry labs. I mean, the, the rigor of chemistry is changing and, I mean, there was a lot of conversation that went into the, to, to the projects surrounding the, the referendum and it was, they were clearly laid out, you know, the.
They were and, but I don't believe the referendum committee put that list together. That was put together by the administration in like '07 or '08 as some needs or some, some stuff that the district needs. Where I'm having trouble with is, Dave, do you remember in a facilities and grounds meeting not too long ago, you asked us a question? How good is good enough?
I did.
You remember that?
I do.
And you've also told us that when we get done building, we're going to be close to a million square feet under roof?
Just under a million square feet, that's correct.
And you're overwhelmed?
It is overwhelming.
O and M feeds our buildings, correct? That's what it takes to, to keep our buildings going.
Operating, that's correct.
Is that going to be a burden on us?
Absolutely.
Is the burden worth looking into before we spend the whole $35 million? Because if we don't have the 35 million, it's debt, it's borrowed money, it's not just sitting there.
You can bring up a lot of good points and I appreciate that, that particular, yes, absolutely. Yeah, I would want to know what my operating costs are going to be over the next 20 years before I invest it. That being said, I, I think that's pretty easy to, to bring that to the forefront. It's just never been asked of me.
Right, I remember when GES opened, we thought, this is a state-of-the-art building, it's very energy efficient and it had, had one of the highest electric bills of any of our building. Didn't it, wasn't it pretty high compared to?
You know, first year, we had construction costs involved with that.
Okay.
That has now changed.
Okay, but we're adding all new air conditioning. We're adding all new air conditioning to a lot of buildings. We haven't, we don't really know what our O and M is going to be. I think it, I feel like it would be nice to be able to know what it's going to take to feed this, these buildings that we're, that we're putting out.
Just understand that, that, that energy modeling that you're asking for, there's fees associated with that.
Right.
And we'll have to pay interior staff to get that information. If you want detailed information, if you want ballpark information, I could probably come up with that. What do you need?
Buildings are important and I know that, that that was one of the important things of part of the 35 million, but only 10 million of that 35 million went to, to add in more classrooms and.
Say that again?
10 million of that 35 million was actually adding more classrooms?
That's not true.
How much is it?
We've got 6 million in GIS.
Ball is one and a half.
And we've got.
How much is GES?
GES is 4.2.
High school would be five and three quarters.
Yep.
That's everything. And then, construction costs.
Well, that, no, that's not. Book fees, because that's all part of it.
Yeah, it's close to 7 million.
So, by the time you get all done, you're probably looking at 15, something close to that.
Okay, 15 out of 35. That means another 20 that were.
But understand that, that at, at the forefront of all of this was that we had a lot of need in the, in the repair arena too, which Susan's talked about and Jim's talked about, that we had air conditioning, that we had parking lots.
Leakers.
And, and all that was representing the other $20 billion of the work.
Right.
And, you know, the, I think, I don't remember exact wording of it, but the, the referendum, the way it read was to make improvements in the district. It was not to add necessarily strictly classroom space and that sort of thing, but to make improvements in the district.
Right, that is correct. That is correct.
Steve, am I, am I understanding you right that the, and I agree, we need to look at O and M costs because that is important, but that the O and M costs should preclude us from adding the classroom space and the instructional and safety things that our students need?
The only addition.
Is that what you're saying? That the O and M costs should keep us from adding?
No, I think we need to have a handle on what we're building here and what it's going to cost to maintain it and if that's so overwhelming that we have to cut back on instructional for our kids, then we've lost focus of why we're here.
I, I agree with that, but I also want enough space for our kids.
That's fine.
And I want science labs there.
But if we go back to Dave's question, how good is good enough?
I don't know. I mean, but I think we, in that respect, we talk about different types of flooring or different types of construction methods as opposed to adding space and doing some of these things. We could put terrazzo on every one of these buildings like we've got in the high school, but it's going to cost us a whole lot more money to do that. And that's, good enough is what we've got.
I understand, but do we just rush to spend the 35 million and just get?
I don't think we're rushing to spend it.
Okay.
I think it's been a, it's been a very thought-out, methodical plan as to what we do in the three phases as to what we're doing. And if I remember and, you know, in the discussions in that, I think that in, in all, all of our budget preparations, there are increases in the O and M that goes on or is, is, is built into the budget on a year-to-year basis, just like teacher salaries and, you know, all the other things that we have to do. But that O and M, there is a, an increase that's built, that is planned for in those future budgets.
And I will, I would, I would like to, Patrick, in last month's board DAX, Patrick put together a really good comparison of the levy and I will advise you that the increase in O and M that will, that we will see is about, was like $755,000. That is the increase in dollars between the current year and the prior year. And that's because the percentage of levy, I know this sounds technical, but the percentage of levy, here it is, actually, you can look at this. What's happened is we are reducing our education fund levy and we're bumping up our O and M fund levy. So, in fact, we've already started that process. And by studying that levy history, you will be able to verify that what my statement is, is true.
Well, if you say the education fund here from in 1995 to 2000.
No, no, just look at the last two years.
Okay.
13, look at the last two columns.
We go from, well, we don't have 14 out here, so.
Well, no, because the levy in December 13, the first half is in June of this year, the second half is in September of this year, but that is the school's new fiscal year, 1415. So, this is as current as it gets.
Is this year end?
No, that's levy year.
Okay.
That's levy year 13.
The year reversed to the levy year.
Okay.
When you take action in November and December of that year, that's called levy year 2013, levy year 12, levy year 11. So, where the most current levy we're in is levy 13.
And it's on that schedule.
Mm-hmm. And it's 2.69 versus 2.73.
Correct. The, the current year, the 13 year is 2.69, correct? For the education fund?
2.694.
Okay, and then in the levy year 2012?
But that is, yeah, that is a percentage. Is it not, Patrick?
No.
That is a percentage?
No, no, it's, it's the levy.
It's the rate.
It's the rate.
But the, that doesn't equate to how much money we get out of that, does it?
Correct, that's the, I have to look at my chart again, but I believe those are the rates that were applied.
Right. Right.
That's the rate applied against the EAV, so the dollar amounts are there.
Exactly, so you can get, even at a 2.69 with the EAV going up, you can realize more money in that levy than you could last year, even though levy was higher, but your EAV was lower.
Well, there's.
Is that, is that correct?
There's a schedule, remember that schedule that you showed up on the screen, the 1213 schedule? Do you, could you find that?
It'll be on you.
Well, let's not belabor the point, I'll show it to you.
But it's been going up every year, the ed fund levy, so 2012 was, actually went, it went down at 13, but over time it's been going up.
Right. When, when we do our levy, we, we ask for specific dollars in each of these buckets and then it's backed into, to EAV to, to produce the, the dollars that we're asking for. We ask for more and, and it's capped and, and, and it comes out. So I agree that we need further conversation on, on our levy, which needs to have, happen in the fall of this year. So we can, um, most cost effectively allocate where we want the money based on the long-term goals of the, of the district. And we may need to have, as we talked, Susan, and, and, we may need to have, um, you know, bond counsel come in or a bond consultant come in and help us look at the structure of our debt, look at health, life, safety opportunities, look at the, the current bonding to make sure that we are, these are all good things to talk about and all good things to look at. And make sure we're structuring in the, the, the best way to meet the long-term, term needs of the district. I looked really hard at the O and M numbers and have been for, for some time. And O and M is increasing, but the district is increasing. The, the needs are increasing, the populations are increasing, the, the codes are increasing to, you know, the airflow is four times what it was before, so you replace an air conditioner and you got to put in bigger equipment and run it longer and harder. And so there's a lot, a lot of pressure. The O and M budget, you know, is, and I'm, I'm just going to throw a number out there, about 10% of, of our, of, of our, our, our fund budget. So there's a, it is a, it's a big number, but it is a, a smaller percentage. There's a lot of, a lot more in salary and benefits and some of the other things. It's something that I, I think it's great to talk about. I think that we're finding new and better ways to do things. And I think that we, we, um, need to keep that conversation, you know, here so that we can do the right thing.
I, I agree, I think, um, I think Steve is touching on the O and M issue, which I have expressed concerns about. But what I, what my observations are tonight is, does the board want to seek any community input? Maybe there are people out there that would like to check in and say, I would like this to be the priority. I would like the generators to be top of the list. Do you, are you at the point where, or are you willing to listen to some community members?
Always willing to listen to some community members, always. I mean, they are always free to contact us, to let us know. There are several times during each one of our meetings that they can express their concern and their, um, and that is always welcome, always welcome. And I think the community spoke on passing the referendum as to what was going to be done.
Well, and it's not that they don't continue to speak all the way through. I mean, they, you know, we still, I imagine all of us talk to the community all the time. So I, I think we're having this discussion here and I certainly think that if anybody wishes to contact any of us or go through Carrie or Rick to share their feelings with the board, that's great.
Absolutely.
We're working hard to make sure that, that anyone who has an opinion or wants to be heard can get to any one of us. We are trying to roll that up to, to Carrie, for us to make sure that all board members are on the same page, that we, we are hearing what is, is, is going on and what the concerns are. And we'll try to, to, to bring these topics up at the board meeting so we can have, have, um, open conversation about, about where we're at. I, we did put strategic planning on, on, at the next one and that may be the spot.
Right.
Where, where we can, you know, get into more of.
Get more input from the community.
And it needs to, it needs to be in the, uh, the, the appropriate setting is where we have to have, have, um, these, these conversations.
Well, one appropriate setting based on Linda and Lisa's remarks is of course the board meeting, correct? Isn't it? Okay, that's one setting. And then perhaps there are other settings as well.
You know, the committees and the, you know, and again, the strategic planning when we invite the community to become involved in the, in the, the long-term. Remember, these aren't projects for today. You know, these projects, we're focusing on the ends, we're focusing on five years, eight years down, down, down the road. And, um, so there was a lot of input as to, to, to what we, what we, we put in motion.
And I think, if I can just wrap some of it up too, I think that committee that was put together did a dynamite job putting together a needs evaluation, a needs assessment of the district and getting that information out to the community. And, uh, it, uh, it was needed at the time and I think the, the results of that, what we need to do now with, with the phase three and some of the other things that we're still completing now is the, we're just getting done with that. Then we take a look at what may be needed down the road also because, you know, some of those things we may be able to take care of with, with this. And also back to our, our contractor partners and our, the engineers and the architects is that, if you look at that, if you look at this, uh, this report we get every month, and this is available on board docs to everybody, but if you look at it too, they have really held the line, um, on any kind of change orders that we've had to deal with on, on these projects. Uh, I think as of this report for phase one, we're at 1.35% change orders on a total of, uh, I think the total here was 15 million, a little over 15 million dollars. And I would challenge anybody to go out and find a project worth 15 million dollars where you're spending 1.35% on change orders. It just, you won't, you may find it, it'll take you some time. So I want to thank all the, our construction partners and architects, engineers, everybody who's had part of this, this, the dynamite job that they've done, they continue to do.
So, um, I, I will close with, with, um, we're not the only district that's challenged with the current economic environment out there. And we're, everybody here and everywhere is working and then the classrooms and all around and then our contractors are working very hard to try to, to, you know, come in on time, under budget, you know, and, and, and get this stuff done. The classrooms have made cuts and we're, you know, trying to listen and respond to, to all of that. But everybody's going through a lot of challenges right now. And we just need to responsibly navigate through, through this and, um, and move, move forward for the, for, for the long-term. The community hasn't changed, you know, the, the kids keep coming, the families expect excellence in education and et cetera.
It's gotten somewhat bigger in 10 years.
Yeah, but the needs are, it keeps going in the same direction and it's not smaller, staying, staying, staying the same.
And we are fortunate in that respect, not all districts are experienced.
We're fortunate, we just have to find a way to make it, this, this all work, work together. Right, I'm good with that?
I think it blends well into the next topic, perhaps, revisiting of the plan.
Yeah, the, the next topic, we're, we're, um, we've got some unfinished.
Thank you for staying guys.
Yeah, thank you very much. We're, we've got some unfinished business with, um, you know, board goals. So I'd just like to bring that up and, and, um, take this to the next step. I want to talk about, you know, bringing in either Larry Dirks or, or the other.
Dean Langdon.
Dean Langdon, um, to, you know, help facilitate closure of, of those high level board goals. They're out there, they're written, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, but we do want to get them into print ready, action ready form. But I think we're subconsciously using them, but, but we'd like to, to clean them up. The superintendent evaluation process, uh, I had the PowerPoint put on here from IASB. They have a new, um, program and I, I really think that we need to sit down and go through that. Part of, if you, if you look at the PowerPoint, um, part of that process begins now, so the sooner the better. But we need to plan for, uh, the, the next, um, the, the next evaluation and make sure that we have a, um, agreed upon, well-thought-out process on, on, on the front end. We have a policy, when you look at that policy, make sure we understand the policy, find the right tools and, and, and follow through with that. And, um, that, the, this process is pretty, pretty clear and well laid out, so if you want to take some time to look at that, we'll, we'll, um, look at that. And then strategic planning, I dug and I find, found the, um, you know, 2020 initiative and I read it again. But I, I hadn't looked at it for a while. This is, we kind of want to put our goals in here too, insert the goals. But, um, I'm going to read them. By September 2008, the ball chat and board of education will determine its service relationship with, with SAS Ed. So we're, we're well past that, Jen, thank you. In, in, um, May 2009, we will adopt a district-wide staff development plan. Well, we're, we're past that and actually on to probably version three of that, since this has been written with all of the new legislation. By fall 2009, we will implement a tool to evaluate educational support staff. Again, being addressed by the legislation for us, so we need to commit to complying with the, with, with the new standards that are out there. By August 2010, infrastructure, including standard networking, cabling and key technological components be, be, be in place. You know, still a work in progress. Technology is one of the things that we talked about in, in, in goals, always going to be there, so that has to be on, on there. Fall 2010, learning targets in place for core curricular areas. Again, that's changing with, with new standards that are being, being, um, applied upon. 11, in response to intervention, will be fully implemented in reading and math, you know, being now expanded to other, to, to other areas. And by 2012, facilities will be in place to meet our student needs. So we're, 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 we're past that, but now we're working to meet our students' needs in the, you know, in the boards beyond, beyond us out there in the, in, in the vision. And, um, I mean, when I read this, the 2020 initiative, this really can't be strategic objectives, can't have a shelf life. They need to be evergreen. Uh, and 2020 is really, it's not a year, 2020, you know, it's more of a, um, a vision. And, and hopefully we can, um, you know, bring in the community and, and, and talk about, you know, where we are and, and where we want to go so we can have the, the, um, the vision and mission and all of that in, in, in place that we can make decisions that are, you know, data-driven for today, but driving us to, to where we need to go. So I, I talked way too long on that, but, you know, discussion.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I like that they have to be evergreen, you know, that you're constantly pruning and checking and, you know, I really like that, that visual.
And that they can, being evergreen, they can, the changes that occur with our budget, with the state and such, don't so highly impact those because our goals are, are the same, to provide, an example, provide quality education to all our students. How we have to go about that will change based on a lot of different circumstances.
Well, I really like numbers one and two with the idea of, and my preference is Dean Langdon helping us this summer to, you know, get underway, have, have Dean help us wrap up our board goals. And then perhaps Dean has a program that coincides with the pamphlet. Because I do think we need some, um, professional resource moderator on superintendent evaluation. So even though I know our summer is packed with meeting dates, these are really two important things, I think.
I think all three of them aren't really. And I think Dean could help with the strategic planning too, that really needs to go hand in hand with both of those as well. I mean, it's kind of the community piece, uh, the board goals and then that then in turn is the self, or the superintendent evaluation, as well as a self-evaluation for a board, but, um, it's like getting a key.
That was used for the last community, was a very good, we had pulled people from all different aspects of education, business, community. So it was a well-representative group of our community and I think that's.
Yeah, the, I think the part that, you know, we did well in that was to identify groups and then ask them to send a representative. So if you remember, we identified the, you know, boosters, sports boosters and music boosters. And we said, please send a representative to this group. And then, um, you know, so we went out to, reached out to all of them, the chamber, um, you know, PTOs. We, we reached out to each of those groups and said, please send your member to this group. So then you get a nice cross-section of not one agenda or not one viewpoint. Really, it was a nice cross-section of the district, so.
And there were teachers and it was nice.
Teachers and, yeah, support staff.
And it was, it was good because we weren't cheerleading the people who were on.
Yeah, no, they did.
Which I think was really important that each individual group, they chose their representative.
Yep. Yep. I can certainly reach out to Dean and see if he can do all of those.
I'd be happy to make the call too.
Yeah.
Take it off your plate.
Okay, sure, sure.
I'd be happy to call him and have him throw some dates out for us to.
If you can get those dates to us as soon as you can.
And we can have further discussion and decide what we want to do. I just wanted to get it out there and with, with your permission, we'll ask for, for.
Well, and whatever we do, make sure when we leave the first one, we have a scheduled date for the second one. He said, oh, board goals were to start it before I even got elected, so.
We need to get them up there. And I know Dean was anxious to meet back with us. He even said that he would like to continue, so.
Right.
And the board self-evaluation, right Steve? Yeah, so Angela for.
I know, really.
Okay.
It is.
Whatever.
Yeah.
The only difference would be that those three that are listed would be an open session because they're about processes and goals. Whereas a board self-evaluation would probably be a separate day because it's a, it's a closed session, I know. So that would be the difference, but may as well tell them that we want.
While we have him here, we can do kind of a Q and A. Get a little direction, you know, from, that's what, that's what these guys do. They, they help boards and districts, you know, get on the path.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, thank you for doing that.
Okay. Uh, thank, thank you, thank you all. Communications, uh, future board meeting dates. We're here with negotiations on June 24th, June 25th and July 2nd. And then our next regularly scheduled board meeting, meeting is on July 28th. Please make a note of it. And then to be determined will be whatever comes from our contact with, with Dean. 12 dot two, citizens, opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any topic. Yes? Please. And just would tell, state your names so for us who, or anyone who doesn't know.
Okay, I'm Larissa Hansen and I wanted to address the board about the whole referendum committee issue. Um, as a member of the original referendum committee, um, I just wanted to kind of clarify a few things regarding the review slash look back, however you want to, you want to look at it and what we are kind of thinking. I, I have met with a couple of other members of the committee as well. And we have some concerns. Initially, as you may recall, those of you who are on the board at the time, we actually reviewed a number of issues before we ever really agreed to be that referendum committee. And one of the things we, um, looked at was the implication of the tax and the sale of the bonds on taxpayers. Um, because we knew that that was kind of critical. And the whole selling point of the referendum at the time was that it would not increase taxpayers' obligations. And that to us was very important. Um, but a lot has changed, um, in the time that since we originally passed that referendum. And what hasn't changed is the needs. Um, and we've gone over that and looked at different numbers and we were through numbers that showed that the high school hasn't really grown in terms of its population. And I actually came up with, um, a document that shows that even though maybe the high school hasn't grown in terms, in great terms, um, to date, that if you look at almost an actuarial table that shows incoming kindergarten classes and how much they grow over a period of time, that we can expect growth at the high school in the very near future. So I don't think the fact of growth or lack of growth or the fact of. So I don't think the fact of growth or lack of growth, or the fact of repairs and lack of repairs is really what's at stake. I think what's at stake and what we'd like to look at again is how to fund those infrastructure changes that we know need to happen. I originally agreed to participate, because I was a parent who had children in several schools that had infrastructure issues, I thought at the time. And I'm still a parent of three students in the district, and they're still at schools that could use some help. And so from a parent's perspective, I'd love to see the infrastructure improve. From a taxpayer's perspective, I obviously don't want to see my taxes go up, but I also recognize from a taxpayer's perspective that the value of my home is contingent on the value of the school. And so I don't want to be in a position, I speak for all the committee members, where we're short-sighted and saying, we can't increase the taxes, we can't improve our schools, because we don't want our taxes to go up, because ultimately, I want my property value to stay the same or go up, and the school has a huge part to say in that. The third reason that I agree, though, is I'm also a business owner, and I strongly believe that in order to make all business successful in this area, we have to have a vibrant community, which means we have to have growth in our schools, we have to have people who are looking to relocate to this area and saying, yeah, I want to be in the Chadum School District, not one of the other school districts, which means we have to have a solid base, not only for, in terms of infrastructure, but in terms of education. So when we looked back at the whole funding issue and the question of how to fund now, based on the fact that the economy is totally different, based on the fact that we don't have the cash reserves that we had at the time, that we thought were going to be somewhat sustained, that we really want to look at how to fund that. So I, you know, have used a lot of different analogies, but the one that I keep going back to is it's a home mortgage. You know, we can, I was told that I could mortgage a lot more than I would ever be comfortable mortgaging, quite frankly, and so I didn't take the full amount of the mortgage. We didn't buy a home that was for the full amount of our mortgage. So now we've been told that this $35 million is what we're able to get. Does that mean we should spend all of it? Maybe not. Are there other ways to fund it? Maybe there are. Maybe things like that HLS levy to pay for some of those health, life, safety issues, maybe we can extend those out. I don't really know. And I'm not in a position on the board to make those decisions, but what I would like to suggest is that there are two benefits in opening up this issue to community questions right now, before we bid on the expansion of the high school and before we spend more money. And that is that the first benefit is obviously that we'd be able to assess from a community perspective the impact of the type of debt we're taking on, whether that's a levy that we can levy to, you know, at the end of this fiscal year and bring in money next year to take some of the burden off this $35 million and hopefully increase our percentages so that we're not ranked as low on the financial rankings from the ISBE, therefore increasing the amount of interest we have to pay in future years. So assessing the future impact of the debt is the number one benefit. The number two benefit, I'd like to say, is that when we go back to, and somebody mentioned it tonight, that we didn't establish as the committee what those objectives were, and that's true, we did not. They were handed to us by a prior administration, an administration I don't really want to get into all the, you know, faults of, but we all know that to be associated with, I just think it's worth looking at those plans and making sure those plans are aligned financially with where this district is now heading, knowing that there are some things that maybe weren't done according to the way they should have been done. And so looking at those plans, to me, gives the district an opportunity to kind of make a fresh start, from a public relations perspective, in addition to obviously from a financial perspective. So to really get the, to bring in an outside, to answer your question, Mrs. Carter, was, you know, why would we do that? The board has, the advisory committees are listed, and they've been used many times over the period of time that I've been involved in this district, as a way of getting input from the community, from the businesses, from other parents, from teachers, to say, these are the needs that we have, is this the best way to go? I would argue that having an outside financial planner, not bond, not PMA, not the people who are intricately and intimately involved in the finances, but having an outside perspective to say, you know, maybe this isn't the best way to fund this debt, maybe this isn't the best way to fund the infrastructure, but knowing that there are community members who believe that there's a lot at stake too. So I think it's a win-win, just from the public relations perspective, because you're distancing yourself from an administration that maybe we needed to distance ourselves from, and you're taking a fresh look and you're saying, it's the board's plan, it was no administrative plan. The board at the time made the plan. So the new board, I think, has an obligation to look at that old plan and say, yeah, this plan is still in line with what we want to do, or it's not, or it's in line in terms of what we need to do, but we need to fund it a little bit differently. So I totally appreciate the fact that you are, you know, the plan has been followed virtually to a T at this point. I totally believe that we need to expand Glenwood High School, having been in there, totally believe that we need new parking lot in Glenwood High School, so I appreciate that, because I keep almost losing my car and some of the divots, so. But I just think it's worth looking at again, so that's all the comments I have, unless you have questions. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For waiting so long.
Oh, no problem.
Is there anyone else that would like to? All right. So with that, I need a motion to, do we go back into closed?
Yeah, actually, we do, go into closed session, motion rather than adjourn.
So for the purpose of--
Did we take a roundtable out? We're not there now?
Oh.
Negotiations and--
Roundtable's not in here, do we want to do--
Are we done?
I thought, I thought I got input that we weren't doing anymore. I can put it back on if you need it.
I just had a question about the property, the 10 acres at Ball.
I told Dave to put it on the agenda for next time, but it's okay. It's okay. Okay. Looking to the--
Okay. So we need to go into closed sessions for the purpose of--
Negotiations and personnel.
Negotiations and personnel, so I need a, a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Steve.
Oh, sick.
Thank you, Brandon. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed.